...for the people to be able to initiate their process today?
Well, we thank you very much for your presence. Today, we're going to now be convened for the purposes of the beginning of our presentations and the balance of the members who are in the building who will help us constitute a quorum. We respectfully request that you join us. We're delighted that the members who are here are ready to proceed and we will begin our presentations with the Honorable Jan Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and... Come on, stand up. Come on, don't be shy. I'm standing here with our summer intern Veronica Sanchez and her parents. And I've asked them all to stand here with me today to thank Veronica for her enthusiasm, her energy, and her intelligence in serving the constituents of the Ninth Council District during her two-month internship in my office. She came in with a positive attitude and was always eager to lend a helping hand to all constituents. She has a commitment to helping those in need and for that I deeply appreciate what she has been able to accomplish this summer. She's going back to complete her bachelor's degree at Loyola Marymount and is looking forward to having a career in law. I just want to say thanks for all your hard work and it's been a real pleasure to have you on our staff. And I want to say to your parents, you raised yourself a wonderful child. So, thank you very much.
I would like to thank Councilwoman Perry and her staff for giving me the opportunity to learn a great deal in my summer internship. And I will take that knowledge back with me to school and hopefully it'll make me a better student. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just have one quick one and then we'll go to final one. And the next guy, this is a man who's really, really special. He's special because he's wise and he's lived a long time and he's 102 years old.
Now, Ms. Perry, we know that you are not prone to prevarication, but it's hard for us to believe that that gentleman is 102 years old. God's been good to him. Isn't that obvious? All right.
That's right. I want to present to you Charles Lawson Ford. He has lived in the Ninth Council District for more than 46 years. And I don't know, there must be something in the water in the Ninth Council District because we have a lot of people who are over 100 years old in the Ninth Council District. Something good in the water. But I wanted to present this resolution to Mr. Ford today. He was born in Mississippi on October 2nd, 1899. Made his way west to Los Angeles in 1931, settling in the area around Central Avenue. And he has always played a major role in the development of our city. He secured work in the Los Angeles construction business and proceeded to help build the Los Angeles River and many other parts of downtown Los Angeles. Through his job as a construction worker, Mr. Ford helped in the transformation of Los Angeles from an area dotted with orange groves and water and storm runoff and mountains to the great city that we live in today. And for the ladies out there, I want you to know that he's single and available. And he still lives in the Ninth District, so if you want me to hook you up, just call the office. And he enjoys the simple pleasures of life, good health, good vision, and he still drives. So it's my honor to recognize you today for 46 years in the Ninth District and wish you continued health and happiness as you approach the momentous occasion of your 103rd birthday.
I'm glad to be here and thank God for blessing me to be among the living. It's just a pleasure. It's the greatest surprise in my life. And when Mr. Dunn brought me down here, I didn't know what it was all about, but I'm so thankful that he thought of me to get me down here. It's a pleasure.
Why don't you tell us the secret of your long life?
Well, as I tell most people, there are so many people ask me that question and I tell, I say, "Well, that is a secret."
Yeah, that is a secret.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Another round of applause. Great wisdom, the secret of living to be 102 is a secret.
All right, and our final presentation, I'd like Mr. Garcetti to come join me. And this is special. I know this has been a story that's been in the news. It's an incredible story of commitment and awareness and service to community. And it's a story with a happy ending. With us today are the staff members of the St. John's Well Child Center. Jim Mangia, Executive Director, and is Denise here today? Okay, Denise Leon, Front Desk Receptionist. Denise Hill, Nurse Practitioner. Claudia Solis and Cesar Carabates. Cesar's not here today. Okay, this is a Well Child Center located in the Ninth Council District. And as many of you are aware, it's the clinic where a little girl was identified and basically saved her, saved her life and reunited her with her family by their good training, level of awareness, understanding of protocol, and identifying problems because of what they do day in and day out. I'm just honored and excited to present to you these individuals from the St. John's Well Child Center. Each one of the individuals here today played a key role in the rescue and safe recovery of little four-year-old Jessica Cortez who was reported missing early this last week. Jim Mangia, Denise Leon, Denise Hill, Cesar Carabates, and Claudia Solis demonstrated quick, quick thinking, intelligence, and compassion. They worked together to take care of the situation. Now, Jim noticed a suspicious woman and a disheveled child that this lady had brought into the Well Child Center. Claudia Solis had the forethought to question little Jessica and discovered that she was who they thought she was. Denise Leon recognized the little girl and dialed 911 from her phone. And then Denise did something really... Denise Hill? Denise Hill performed a long, drawn-out medical examination of a little girl in order to keep her there in the clinic and successfully attempted to stall the alleged kidnapper until the police arrived to take her into custody. I think we'll always remember the actions that all of you have done and we'll serve as an example for everyone who strives to make this city a safer place for all of our children. And I just want to say personally, as a councilperson in this area where the clinic is located, I'm... These are the kinds of things that we should work hard and even harder to make sure that they get funded because they serve the same people that we do and they're understaffed, underfunded, and I just... This is just an example of what good training and commitment can do. So I wanted to commend all of these individuals here today for lending their hearts and their hands to our community. And I'd like to introduce Jim Mangia, Executive Director of the St. John's Well Center and ask him to just share a little bit of his experience. Before I do that, why don't I have Councilmember Garcetti come up here and say a few minutes and then say a few words and then we'll have the Executive Director.
Thank you, Councilmember Perry. When I went to St. John's yesterday with the mayor and Councilmember Perry to thank the entire staff and the clinic for their bravery, you step into the place and you know that it is a sanctuary. And it has been a sanctuary for so many people in the community. And the services that you've provided for not only physical health, but the spiritual health of people radiates in that place. And I can think of no better place and no better staff of angels to have embraced Jessica when she came in the door. And Echo Park, where I live and also where more than 1,000 people were fanning out trying to look for Jessica, we thank you for your heroism. We thank you for your bravery. We thank you for showing us what the best of this city is and the best of humanity is. And we just want to also let the media know that you played such an important role in getting Jessica's face and name out there. And without the media, we couldn't have gotten Jessica back to her family. So thank you from all of us in Echo Park.
Thank you very much. St. John's Well Child Center is a network of free medical and dental clinics for children and their families in Los Angeles. Our main location is in Councilwoman Jan Perry's district. And Councilwoman Perry has been key support to us since she's arrived on the council and we're forever grateful for that. We want to thank you very, very much for this recognition and I want to very briefly acknowledge the staff who are with us today. There were more staff who were involved, but when we got ready to leave this morning, there was over 50 children in our waiting room waiting for medical services and we had to leave most of our staff behind. But we were able to come with two of the key people. Denise Leon, who's to my right, was the person who first recognized Jessica. The medical assistants asked her her name when we were confirmed that it was her. Denise dialed 911. And there was another member of our staff, when the woman who kidnapped Jessica tried to leave, who physically blocked her from leaving, Patty Orozco. Medical assistance Claudia Solis, who you recognize and being recognized today, went in and hugged the child and told her that everything was going to be okay. And then I instructed Denise Hill, who's our nurse practitioner, to take the child and the woman into our medical exam, one of our medical examining rooms and to do the longest physical examination she'd ever done in her life. And I didn't realize this until yesterday, you know, because we've been so caught up in all this media hoopla, that Denise actually went through one full physical exam and then did another and just did the same thing over again. And one of the things that was very moving was that after she did the first one, we were, you know, we were all positioned at different places in the clinic to make sure that there was no way that child was leaving the clinic till the police arrived. And Denise peeped her head out of the medical exam room and, you know, we didn't know if this woman was armed or not or dangerous. And her face was pale and she was very nervous and I said, "Go back in." And she went back in and the bravery of all of our staff is just incredible. And the response of the LAPD was really, really rapid and really, 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 they were wonderful when they came. And I also want to thank them for all of the clinic staff members because of how they assured us in their quick response and how they treated the child and how they dealt with the situation with a clinic full of people even when they arrived. So, thank you very much. Thank you much, very much, Councilwoman Perry. You're really an inspiration to all of us for your leadership on the council and in our district. And Councilman Garcetti, thank you again for visiting us yesterday and it was a real privilege to meet you and thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And on behalf of a grateful city to St. John's, we extend our heartfelt appreciation. Ms. Garcetti and Ms. Perry, we thank you for the presentation. We'll now have a special presentation for she who was here first, the Honorable Wendy Gruhl from the Second Council District of the City of Los Angeles.
Good morning. I am pleased to be standing with some gentlemen behind me who make our city a better place. And all too often, we don't thank our city employees for the hard work that they do every day. And sometimes, we just expect that it's taken care of. And so not enough can be said about this incredible-paced team. For those of you that don't know, it's called the proactive code enforcement. They're dedicated, persistent, professional, and committed members of our city family who have spent numerous hours, including weeknights and weekends, to help business owners clean up their property. And to go to areas at times where I think sometimes our businesses believe they won't be caught because it is off-hours. And these individuals take their time during those off-hours to make sure that our city is a clean and I think a place where that we can be proud of. They have assisted us in enforcing codes relative to street vendors, outside displays, along commercial corridors. And they have had several citations and orders that have been issued and enforced in several neighborhood areas. And I think a part of the Targeted Neighborhoods Initiative, I was just talking to Donna and Prudy Schultz who live in the Van Nuys TNI and said how great it was that we were acknowledging these individuals. I also want to mention that there are... One of the team is moving to a new position, John Sabares, who is going to move on to the citations division and will be sorely missed in this particular task force. I'd like to commend them. I know in my first week, I went out with some of my neighborhood leaders and they identified some places where there was graffiti on top of a building in one of the businesses. And within days, citations had been issued and the graffiti had been cleaned up. And again, these are things that we don't always notice. We just want to have taken care of and surprisingly, someone comes by, gives a citation, and educates many times our business owners and neighbors about what they need to do. So I am so pleased to... So I am so pleased to stand here, and I want to also introduce David Keim, who many of you know from Building a Safety that is here. But if I can, I would just like to, one, present these proclamations and identify each of the PACE team members. I won't have each of you come up right now, but you can wave your hand. Those that... John Sabares? Okay, great. Leo Wang? Leo. Abraham Rush? Abraham Rush. Richard Blankin? Richard Blankin. Dennis Metz? Dennis Metz. Michael Scholzinger? Michael Scholzinger. Kip Kennedy? So Kip, what's your real name?
Kip.
It's Kip? Okay, it is Kip, okay. Sorry about that. Robert Rendick?
Wendy, what's your real name?
I won't tell.
Kip asked me to ask you that.
Michael Cooper? Michael Cooper. Jose Colon? Jose Colon. Horace Foltz? Horace Foltz. Javier Alapiu? Javier Alapiu. And there's a few that are not present today I want to mention who could not be here. Daniel Nahaku, Samuel Garcia, Gerald Gross, Eldon Kay, Glenn Oliver, and Timothy O'Connor. Oh, wonderful. Timothy, great. So I would like, if we could, give a round of applause for our hard-working employees who make a difference in our lives.
For these dedicated city employees, a big round of applause.
And is there anyone who'd like to say a few words from the group here? David?
Yes, Kip would like to speak.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the council. Thank you, Councilmember Gruel and the rest of the council for recognizing our PACE team here. This proactive approach to code enforcement has really played a significant role in cleaning up blighted neighborhoods all over the city. We look forward in the future to working with the council on expanding this proactive approach and going into those blighted neighborhoods and working with our new neighborhood councils as well. So I just want to take this opportunity to thank you all for the recognition. It means an awful lot to us. Thank you.
I know that, you know, highlighting this for all of you means you're going to get a lot more calls, but just know the priority is Council District Two in the San Fernando Valley. So I appreciate all that you do every single day, and we look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel. Give these dedicated city workers another big round of applause as they take their leave. They work hard for us. They work through from 1:00 through 15:00 proactively enforcing the code, and it's a good thing for the constituents of all of these districts. Ma'am?
Thank you, Ms. Ridley Thomas. I have one more presentation, and this is actually a surprise to this young lady. Could I have Barbara Carr come up? She's surprised. She didn't know this was happening. Could you come up here, Barbara? Barbara is a dedicated individual who has served our city well, and I think her colleagues convinced her that she had to come and speak on an item today before council. And so I would like to introduce Barbara Carr and acknowledge her for her commitment and service to the American Cancer Society. She has worked with the Prevention, Education, Advocacy, and Service Programs for the American Cancer Society for over 22 years. She is the Cancer Control Manager for the American Cancer Society, and she'll be retiring on August 20... Or she did retire. August 23rd, next week, I guess it will be, after 22 years of service. And as the Education and Director of Programs, she spent most of her time working with schools and businesses in the San Fernando Valley, educating our kids about the danger of smoking. She has taught our kids about the importance of nutrition, exercise, and abstaining from the use of tobacco through the Teen Kick Ash Program. Barbara taught a smoking cessation program to adults with Active for Life and Make Yours a Fresh Start for Your Family. She is really a treasured health educator in Los Angeles and will be greatly missed by the American Cancer Society and those of us in our community, and I hope that during her retirement, she will come back and volunteer and be a dedicated member of our community, which I know she will do. So I'd like to take this opportunity to acknowledge Barbara Carr.
I just wanted to say to you that thank you for making me feel right at home today. My hands are shaking and my knees are weak. You said that before that. So I do thank you so much. And I just have a few people that I wanted to acknowledge. I wanted to say that for me, this is the sumum bonum. This is exactly what they mean, but being acknowledged by this city council and by you and by my colleagues, and especially in this historic place. I would like to accept this on behalf of health educators everywhere, the people who train us, the UC Berkley's, the Michigans, the UCLA's, the people who let us do our practice like the American Cancer Society, and the people who collaborate with us, as she's mentioned, the businesses, the industries. And especially, I want to recognize the schools. The L.A. Unified School District is an amazing place for health education with its health education programs, its coordinators, advisors, the health teachers, the TOPI program, the nurses, all of these people out there working and trying to get across the idea that we don't want people smoking, we want them eating their fruits and vegetables, and we want them to be active for life. And I would like to thank the people of L.A. for accepting us and for trying to follow the kinds of things that we're trying to teach people. And I think, and it's said in the American Cancer Society, that together, we can build a powerful network of individuals and organizations who can do something about prevention and who can make a difference. And I hope that another 25 years from now, we can stand here and instead of saying we could have and should have done better, we can say we did do better, we are doing better, and we will continue to do better. We can do prevention, and that's the code word.
All right.
So remember ACS, 1-800-ACS-2345. And to the people of Los Angeles, lastima que tengo dos manos y un solo corazón para ser viles.
Gracias.
Thank you. We now... We do know now why you're going to be missed, because you really are a committed individual. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel. We'll now recognize for a special presentation the Honorable Tom LaBange, representing the Fourth District of the City of Los Angeles.
Members, we don't quite yet have a quorum. We are expecting just a few more members. We have eight members present. We need two for a quorum. Is that not right, Mr. Clerk? Mr. LaBange?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. It's always nice this time of year when you, and this is the first summer for me, but you recognize your interns that help out, and we have a great internship program here in the City Hall, which we welcome those to come up and help our council offices in our field office and do special projects that sometimes don't get the attention. Well, today I have three of the five that we had this summer in here, and I want to salute them in front of all of you. Donzella Brazil, a graduate recently of Cal State University, Northridge, in the great San Fernando Valley, was a commit from Westchester High School, came in and worked several times this summer and helped our community outreach on our press relations. So, Donzella Brazil, I want to salute you with this commendation for all the work that you've done this summer and wish you a good future and let us know how we could help you in the future. Please give Donzella Brazil a big hand. Okay. Also, we have, going back to Tufts University, a graduate of Birmingham High School, but he's now at Tufts, Meshack Gazarian. Give Meshack a big hand for his work. And then he takes the bus across town, and he seems to like this, but he comes every day, which is great to have. From Hamilton High School, returning back to Hamilton, please welcome Henry Whitehead and his work in Salute as an Intern, 2002, Fourth District, City of Los Angeles.
Well, I just have to say, this is a great internship program. I can't tell you... I came in the first day, I was incredibly scared. I was given tasks that I had no idea how to do, and I have to say, I'd like to thank Tom, the staff, who was really nice, including Stacy Marble, who has been the best boss I could have, and everybody at City Hall who's been helpful and friendly to me. You make government a great experience and very educational. Thank you very much.
Please, Donzella Brazil, please.
I just want to take this moment to thank Tom, along with his staff. It has been an honor and a really rewarding experience to see all that takes place behind the scenes and how important the work that you do for your constituents and for the city of L.A. And thank you for allowing me to be here. Thank you.
I'd like to thank the councilmember and his staff. You're all incredible. Just made it very welcoming to work here, and also just running around City Hall doing random jobs just really opens your eyes as to what goes on and how much work effort goes into keeping this city as great as it is. I'd just like to thank everyone that's involved in that process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, interns.
Are there any other presentations? Well, Ms. Mieszkowski, if you join me here, I'll be glad to take care of mine. Mr. President, Madam President, members of the council, may I invite to the podium a dedicated civil servant, one who has spent some 36 years here in the city of Los Angeles serving, and she is retiring. I speak of none other than the one and only, Ms. Sylvia Smith. Won't you come forward? Ms. Smith began her decades of service here in the city of Los Angeles in November of I want each of you to think about where you were in 1966. She began as a clerk typist for the Department of Fire and Police Pensions. And then Ms. Smith moved on to hold various positions in the city clerk's Office of Finance. She began as a senior clerk typist in Review Services Unit and transferred to the Hollywood Branch Office, the public counter there. In 1976, she was promoted to Tax and Permit Field Representative, where she served as supervisor of the Special Investigations Unit. In 1994, she was made a Principal Tax and Permit Field Representative, serving in central operations and Reason III. Her distinguished service to the city has come with many honors, including one notable in 1998, when she received the City Clerk Outstanding Service Award. But then in 1999, she received the City of Los Angeles Career Service Award. And back in 1985, March to be specific, on a very special day, she married world-renowned jazz percussionist Jimmy Smith. And Sylvia Smith has not just served the city of Los Angeles, but she has served her community as well. She has been active in the religious life of our community since the mid-'80s at the First African Methodist Episcopal Church, where she has served as a member and a financial secretary for the Cathedral Choir. A many member of the Sarah Allen Women's Ministry, chairperson of the Biddy Mason Unit, and the Biannual Hunger Wall Committee, as well as president of the Lamp Lighters Club. As you can see, she has been very, very busy. Now we all join the collective admiration, join in the collective admiration of her outstanding service to her community and to the city at large, and we wish to thank her for her dedication and hope that she will enjoy her retirement. Ms. Smith, on behalf of her grateful city, we wish to extend to you our warm congratulations.
I am a living example that equal opportunity is alive and well in the city of Los Angeles. I started as a clerk typist and retired at third-level management. They asked me if I liked my job. I must have. I stayed 36 years in the same department. I give special thanks and honor to a personal mentor and personal friend of mine, Sylvia Nesbit, here in the audience. She was a real inspiration to me and many other people in the division. Thank you very much. It has been my privilege to serve the public of the city of L.A. With me, I am very pleased to present my mother, who of course I owe my very life to, and I can't say enough about her. This is my mom, Mrs. Ernestine Bosley. With me also is my favorite nephew and current leader of the pack, so to speak, is Deacon Willard Bosley from Fresno, California, and his wife, Shontae, and their two children. These are my great nephews, so that might tell my age, but I'm still very proud of them. Please, they could be with me. Thank you.
Madam President, members of the council, I want you to take note of this next presentation, for it is a very, very special one. And if you will, I'd like to ask to join me Father Fernando Aristi. Father Fernando was born in Mexico City, and at the age of 22, he entered the Jesuit Order, the Society of Jesus. And in 1960s, he became moved and inspired by the late Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., which prompted him to move to the United States, where he took part in the Civil Rights Movement and began serving African-American and Latino communities. Father Fernando completed his training in theology in Chicago, Illinois, and was ordained a priest in 1971. During this period, Father Fernando lived in a parish in the African-American community where he devoted his time working for the Community of United People, an organization designed to help empower people to take their destiny into their own hands and to speak for themselves. Continuing in this tradition and working with Asian franchise communities and on issues of social justice, he journeyed to Los Angeles, where he served, where he has served as the associate pastor at the Saint Bridget Catholic Church in our community. He has served there for the past 12 years. And during his tenure, Father Fernando has served as chaplain for the Los Angeles Council of Churches. of Churches and as a part-time chaplain for the African-American student body at Loyola Marymount University. Father Fernando has served as a member of the Board of Directors of the Community Coalition for Such as Abuse Prevention and Treatment, on the Advisory Board of Days of Dialogue. He's been an active member of the Eighth District Empowerment Congress. He's served as a board member of the Southern Christian Leadership Conference. He is an accomplished artist, that is to say, more specifically, muralist, and has painted a series of murals in congregations throughout the United States, as well as in Nigeria and Brazil. Father Fernando's assignment as Pastor of Saint Bridget will conclude this month. He's on his way to Africa for five months sabbatical, after which time he will return to the United States, where he has been commissioned to paint murals in Los Angeles and Houston. And upon completion of these murals, he will return to Africa to begin his new assignment. Father Fernando will be greatly missed on the lives that he has touched far, wide, and deep. Father Fernando is a rather unique individual. He rides the most exquisite and the largest Harley Davidson that I've ever seen. And he's some kind of fellow. We will just leave it there, Mr. Reyes, but when we think of him, we think about someone whose notion of God is large enough to include various traditions. In nineteen ninety-four, when the earthquake happened and the members of the Muslim community's house of worship was destroyed, he opened his arms to them and allowed them to worship there until they could find another place, some eighteen months later. So who is he? He is obviously a muralist. He's a cyclist, you might say, and he's an ecumenist. He is Father Fernando Aristi. We give him to you now.
Thank you so much, Councilman Margaret Lee Thomas. When I saw this little sign that I have in my lapel that says "visitor," I've been so many times in this chamber, so for so many reasons, that I don't feel like a visitor. I was here when I was eight years old in Los Angeles. I came with my parents in nineteen forty-two, and I remember that the tallest building in Los Angeles was City Hall. I didn't know that after so many years after, I would be in City Hall of that place that I visited when I was a child. It's been a tremendous joy for me to serve the people of Los Angeles. As Councilman mentioned, my main purpose in life is peace and justice, social justice. And that's when I came across this man that I really admire, and I never call him any other way but my brother, Margaret Lee Thomas. Yes, I leave Los Angeles for good, but I've definitely taken my heart. All of you that I serve in this city, and you will never be forgotten. And God willing, every now and then, more than now, I might come for a vacation and definitely I'll come by and say hello. Thank you very much.
And finally, Madam President, members of the council, many of us have been working on our own projects to inspire civic involvement, promoting participatory democracy. One such effort in our city is the African-American Voter Registration, Education, and Participation Project, a project that is moving briskly to register persons in South Los Angeles and the adjacent areas in both the city and the county. And when doing so, you invariably meet people with whom you must be impressed. And so I'm pleased today and especially proud to bring before you two young people who have spent their summer break. As we talk about young people leaving City Hall and returning to the academic life, these are two young people who have spent their summer working in communities, registering people to vote. And so if you would join me in welcoming to the podium Wallace Knox III and Danielle Williams, I would appreciate it. Would you come forward? The project's express goal is to increase voter participation rates through registration, education, and participation. And the project's objective is to register some twenty thousand people by October nineteenth, the cutoff for this round of registrations for the November elections. So far, this project has registered since June the third, some eighty-seven hundred people. In large measure, the success of the project and meeting its objectives is because of the hard work of a number of individuals. Two of our leaders, they are team captains, are before us. Each of them have, has worked diligently. Danielle is a recent graduate, last year that is, from a high school that remains competitive with a number of the schools in Los Angeles. She's from Long Beach Polytechnic, having graduated, and she returns to Clark University in Atlanta, Georgia, as a sophomore. And she has registered, since she's been with us, some three hundred and nineteen people. And I think she deserves a big round of applause, don't you? Wallace, a recent graduate from Saint Bernard's, will begin his freshman year at the University of California, Berkeley. And he has worked this summer as one of our team captains, and he's registered some three hundred and seventy-one new voters. And I think Wallace deserves a big round of applause. And so it is Danielle and Wallace that we present these certificates to you in recognition of your dedicated service to the African-American Voter Registration, Education, and Participation Project. Your exemplary efforts to help educate, empower, and register voters in our communities is commendable. And on behalf of the Los Angeles City Council, I'm pleased to recognize both of you for your valuable contributions and extend to you best wishes for a good academic year, and we look forward to seeing you as you come back to us next year to do even more. Danielle? Now, would either one of you like to say just a brief word? Yes, all right. Wallace and then Danielle.
Yeah, well, first off, I'd like to thank my godfather, Ms. Anthony McGinnis, for allowing me, to connect me with this job for the summertime, and thank my community for, you know, working with me, because, you know, I really need their help in order to do my job. And I thank the councilmen and my family, my mother, my father, my brother, for not only keeping me going, but at least keeping me annoyed enough to stay out the house and keep working. And I thank my partner in crime, Danielle Williams, most definitely, because she always kept me going when times got rough. Thank you.
It has truly been a pleasure working for the African-American Voter Rep Project. I enjoyed my summer. It's been a great summer. I enjoyed everything that I did. It's been a pleasure working with Mr. Thomas, and I just want to say thank you for the opportunity that you provided me with. It's opened my eyes a lot to the community, and I'm just glad that I could get out there and meet people and talk to people and be able to register people, and it just feels really good every day going out there and just meeting new people and getting them registered to vote, so that they can also participate in our community. And I want to say thank you once again, Mr. Thomas, for that opportunity that you provided me with. And thank you, Wally, because he always, he urged me to wake up everyone and get out there and go, and we were, like he said, partners in crime, so thank you, Wallace. And thank you very much. Bye-bye. Thank you for this.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ridley Thomas. The chair now recognizes Councilmember Pacheco for presentation. And while Mr. Pacheco is coming forward, Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Prince and Galantr Garsete, Gruhl, Han, Holden, Labange, Miskowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Ridley Thomas, vice sign Padilla, ten members present, and a quorum, Madam President.
Thank you. The council is now in session officially. You would want a minute? Okay, we're going to actually begin the agenda then. Mr. Pacheco is still waiting for us to arrive. Mr. Clerk?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Reyes moves. Ms. Perry seconds.
Mandatory resolutions for approval.
Those are also approved.
Before starting the regular agenda, there's item number one, which is the appointment of a city official, the appointment of Marvin Selter to the Business Tax Advisory Commission as public member, Board of Review. There is a Budget and Finance Committee report recommendation on this matter.
I'd like to ask Mr. Selter to come forward. Members, we do have a recommendation. We have also Ms. Gruhl, who wants to be recognized.
I told Mr. Selter I would be nice to him today, but I do want to say, just today, want to stand up and support your recommendation, being on the B-TAC. He has really been an incredible leader on the issue of Business Tax Advisory Committee in the past, and know will be committed in the future in a look at ways in which we can keep businesses here and to simplify the process. And so he has given us hours and hours and days, I think, and months of his time, not only in this issue, but on a variety of issues. So you're a wonderful part of the city and appreciate your willingness to continue in this manner on the B-TAC. So I encourage all of my colleagues to support your appointment today.
Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilmember Zine.
Thank you, Madam Chair, colleagues. You live in District Two, but you represent the whole city and the entire San Fernando Valley. And I know we had a recent news conference with the mayor regarding the new structure that's being proposed and how we're going to be more business-friendly in Los Angeles. I know that you and the committee have been very active and involved in that. You've got my whole support and just continue with the good work you've been doing to help the business in Los Angeles keep thriving, create those jobs, sales tax revenues come in, so we can keep prosperous in Los Angeles. Keep on the mission. You're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. The chair also would like to recognize Councilmember Labange.
Thank you very much. What's so important is we have people who will serve to help us do things that's so important, like tax reform, which is so important. Looking at the business tax and all the work that you've done, I've appreciated all the work you've done in other areas of the community. You're a great appointee, so I just wanted to thank you and wish you well in your service and let you know my office and my staff are available, as it always has been. But thank you for the push that you give us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Labange. There is no one else who wishes to speak. Members, the Budget and Finance Committee is before you. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Ten eyes. That matter is approved. Congratulations, Mr. Selter, and we look forward to another great effort on your behalf.
Thank you, Madam President.
Well, I'll send that forthwith to the mayor as well, inasmuch as this is the council's last meeting before recess. Mr. Clerk?
Item number twenty-nine, is a communication from the mayor regarding the reappointment of Maria Lu Cachante to the El Pueblo de Los Angeles Historical Monument Authority. Arts Health Humanity Committee waived consideration of this matter.
Is Ms. Calonche present? I don't see anyone coming forward. This is a communication from the mayor. The last day for the council to act is September third. Sorry, Mr. Reyes?
I understand she was here earlier. Can we table this?
We can either table it or we could act on it if that's the council's.
Sure.
All right, well, then let me consider that a motion. Mr. Pacheco?
I was simply going to state, as the council member representing El Pueblo, that from what I understand from the merchants and everyone, they're very pleased with Ms. Calonche, but she's actually right here.
Oh, she is here, all right. If we can ask her to come forward.
I was just going to simply recommend that we move forward today.
All right. Ms. Calonche is coming forward. We have had Mr. Reyes and Mr. Pacheco speak on her benefit. There are no other councilmembers who do wish to speak. Let me, oh, Mr. Labange.
I just want to thank you, Mr. Reyes, Ms. Pacheco, on this, and your appointment. As you know, our city's birthday is coming up September fourth. The Las Paladoras will be reenacting the walk to the great Pueblo of Los Angeles on the second of September. Our birthday is the fourth, but Labor Day is the day we do it, so I just want to welcome you to this commission and the work that you've done in the past, but welcome you again. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilmember Reyes.
Thank you, Madam Chair, President. I want to thank you for being here. I've known Ms. Calonche for many years. She's an educator, has worked numerous hours, numerous days, and weeks, and months, and years in the community, doing a variety of work in relation to organizing, advocating, has worked in various government offices. So I think we're very lucky to have a person who grew up in the neighborhoods, who understands the history as an educator. So thank you very much for your good work and for contributing your time in serving the city.
Thank you. Thank you. I will consider that a motion by Mr. Reyes, which is before us. Members, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Ten eyes. Ten eyes. You are confirmed and approved. Congratulations. And we will also send that one forthwith. I'm going to interrupt the agenda at this time to recognize Mr. Pacheco, whose guests have arrived.
Good morning, Madam President and colleagues. I wanted to bring forward one of our finest institutions in the city of Los Angeles, a place that is very well-known in the community of all heights, but I believe that many people throughout the city of Los Angeles are familiar with La Mascota Bakery for its sweet bread and its delicious tamales enchamprado. La Mascota and the Salcedo family are celebrating fifty years of service. They just recently went through a major renovation of their facility and really have brightened up the whole corridor there on Woodard Boulevard near Marietta. I want to let you know that we are very happy that the community has supported La Mascota and that they have this great relationship together, bringing forward a sense of community between not only the Salcedo family and the children, but also the whole entire neighborhood. On this, it's a very long resolution, but basically Ignacio and Vidal Salcedo were small business entrepreneurs in the Mexican-American community of all heights in the nineteen forties. In September of nineteen fifty-nine, they expanded to twenty-seven fifteen Woodard Boulevard, where the current home of the finest pan dulce, tamales, and cakes. It's a family-owned and operating business, is honored to serve all the customers from the local surrounding neighborhoods, southern and north California communities, as well as national and worldwide markets. The daily operations are administered by Mr. Ignacio Salcedo, Rosina Valencia Salcedo, Edward Salcedo, Ignacio Salcedo Jr., and Victor Salcedo. Obviously, the employees also do a great job for the community and for La Mascota Bakery. I have with me Victor Salcedo, Ignacio... I have with me Victor Salcedo, Ignacio Salcedo Senior, Naomi Salcedo, Victor's wife, and we also have Emilio Carrillo, who is the architect for the new development. I did want to present to the Salcedo family, on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, this resolution, which reads that "The City of Los Angeles declares July 28, 2002, La Mascota Bakery Day and extends Mr. Ignacio Salcedo, Rosina Valencia Salcedo, Edward Salcedo, Ignacio Salcedo Jr., and Victor Salcedo, and four generations of Salcedo family members and all the past and present La Mascota Bakery employees, our congratulations on the accomplishments of their golden anniversary." So on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, with great honor that I present this to you, Ignacio Salcedo and Victor Salcedo.
Well, it's an honor and a privilege to be here in front of the City Council and I'd like to thank you, Councilman Pacheco, for presenting this wonderful proclamation to us. And I'd just like to say that for my family, for four generations that worked there at La Mascota, it's a joy to go to work and just serve our community. And we have my father here. I'd like for him to say a few words, but in parting, I'd like to say that it's been over a generation since our part of the community has had any kind of a street development or sidewalk. And since we have our new councilman here, we've seen some real renovation. And like I say, it's been over a generation since anything's been done there, and we've seen some real improvements now. And I really thank you.
Thank you. He just said it was an honor to be here and that he started here in 1928 and really appreciates all the support and the honor. And we do want to share with you, colleagues, that there are samples and food in the back, pan dulce, tamales, for everyone who's interested in having a little treat today. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pacheco, and the Salcedo family for those treats. Mr. Clerk, let's return to the agenda.
Madam President, items numbers two through 28 are items for which public hearings have been held.
There are cards on item number two. Mr. Do you want to call it?
Public hearing has been held on that matter. We'll take a motion to reopen.
Right, motion would be required, but I don't know if that is to be called special.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to open a public comment for five minutes on number two.
All right, we will do that. We will call it special and go through the rest of the agenda at this point. Members of the Council, are there any other items, two, three, 28? Item 10 is called special by Mr. Zine. 14 and item 26 for Councilmember Holden. Any other specials, members? Seeing none, those matters, other than the ones called special, are now before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Eleven eyes. Those matters are approved.
Also on the regular agenda, items numbers 30 through 59 are items for which public hearings have not been held. There are amending motions that have been distributed in item 56 and 42D.
I also think there was a request from Councilmember Weiss to continue 42B until September 3rd. There are no cards on any of those items. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on any of those items, 30 through 59? Seeing no one, the public hearing is closed, members. Item 39 is called special by Mr. Zine. Any other items, members? Seeing none, those matters with the appropriate amendments as are on the desk are before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Eleven eyes. Those are approved.
Madam President, item number 60 on the continuation agenda is an item for which public hearing has been held.
That matter is now before us. Any discussion? If not, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Eleven eyes. That matter is also approved. Members, all items today will go forthwith, since this is our last meeting before the recess. Next item, Mr. Clerk?
Also on the continuation agenda, items 61 through 63 are resolutions in Council District One, and public hearings have not been held on these matters.
There are no cards that have been received on any of those items, so is there any discussion on items 61 through 63? Seeing no one wishing to speak, those matters are now before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Eleven eyes. Those are also approved.
That brings you back to the first item called special on today's regular agenda. That's item number two by Councilmember Garcetti.
All right, item number two is before us. Mr. Garcetti had moved a five-minute public hearing. If there's no objection, let me call the speakers, ask them to come forward. I will begin with Mr. Michael Levitan, and then after him, Mr. David Morgan, and then Mr. Eric Weiser.
Madam President, honorable Councilmembers, I rise in opposition to the establishment of the proposed Sunset and Vine Business Improvement District. I have faxed and emailed a copy of my remarks made before your Economic Development and Employment Committee last Monday, and I have brought a copy of those remarks that I have asked to have distributed to each of you. This morning, I want to speak to what I see as the unfairness of the bid as constituted. I am a tenant in the proposed district. I have operated an Arby's roast beef restaurant under a lease for the past 33 years. My lease is net-net, meaning that I, as a small business tenant, am responsible for paying the assessment and not my landlord. If the Sunset and Vine bid becomes law, the assessment on my property will be added to my tax bill effectively. My taxes will suddenly jump 150% from $4,914 to over $12,000 in just the first year of the bid, and there is no ceiling on annual increases. The services promised for this increase are simply not worth it to me. I can provide them for myself much more cheaply. I realize that the applicable California code provides that only property owners shall have the right to petition for the establishment of the bid, but the tenants in the proposed district, especially those with net-net or triple-net leases, should be shown some consideration and their input should be solicited. As it stands now, if their landlords have not informed them of the proposed bid and the amount by which their tax bill will increase due to the assessment, they will not know until next December, when it will appear on their tax bill, and it will be quite a surprise. I respectfully request that the Council delay the formation process for the Sunset and Vine bid until the tenants in the area have had a chance to voice their concerns. The Council has a legitimate reason for delay, as I explained to the committee on Monday. The Streets and Highways Code citation in the property owner's petition was given as section 3660 when it should have been 36600. Thus technically, the petition could be ruled null and void, either by you or by a court of law. I thank you for this opportunity to address my concerns.
The Chair now recognizes David Morgan, followed by Eric Weiser.
Yes, I'm David Morgan from the Hollywood Better Government Association. Our association opposes the action to establish this bid because there's not been a full and fair notice to the property owners. No one was mailed a notice of any of the Council Committee hearing or this meeting. So hardly any of the affected property owners and tenants even know you're discussing it today. And after it was promised by the city clerk, by the councilman, by the CHC, that we all have a chance to speak, nobody got notified. So that is completely sufficient reasons to return this to committee and have proper hearings. In addition, the $40,000 of city money has been given to the proponents of the bid for a consultant and lobbyist to solicit petitions, but no matching money has been given to the opponents who might not want this tax. That's completely unfair and denial of equal protection. The CHC, the Coalition, has had secret board meetings for over a year, and it's excluded all the people who did not support the bid. They have bylaws which do not permit the owners to elect the directors or modify the bylaws or pass any resolutions whatsoever. Completely illegal and unfair, and this has been going on the whole time. The city clerk was given objections in May to this, and they failed to do an investigation, failed to terminate the illegal acts, and they still haven't even replied to the Better Government Association's letters. They have not produced the public documents which we've requested or even replied, and neither has CHC. This is all sufficient to have proper hearings at the Council Committee level, which should have been done after proper notice to everybody.
Mr. Morgan, can I ask you to conclude? We have a number of other speakers who would like to.
Yes, right. So anyhow, alternative financing is available. There's over $500 million in CRA interest funds available, and I respectfully request that the Council send this back to committee so we can straighten this out before doing any more.
The next speaker will be Eric Weiser, then Mr. Helmy Hisrich, and Nick Salome. Salome. Is Mr. Hisrich present? Nick Salome, Heather New.
Good morning. I'm Helmy Hisrich. I'm the consultant who's been working on the Business Improvement District, and I just, we had a hearing on Monday, so I wanted to make just a few comments, and we're only going to have two speakers in support of the bid today, property owners who are tenants. I wanted to first just let you know that the Sunset and Vine District is physically located right between the Media District on Santa Monica Boulevard and the Hollywood Entertainment District on Hollywood Boulevard. We wish to thank Councilman Eric Garcetti, Councilman Tom Labange, and Mayor Hahn's office for their support in moving this project forward. We've been having public meetings since January. We've been telling every property owner by email and by email. The Coalition includes large, medium, and small business owners. Some of the large owners are Cinerama Dome, KCBS, KCal, and Tribune. Some of the small owners who are here today include McDonald's, Offline Restaurant, Kentucky Fried Chicken, and Dina Art. What's significant about this Business Improvement District is we also have worked with LAUSD as well as social service agencies to develop task forces specifically for homeless outreach and also for working with students in the new high school on Sunset Boulevard. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Thanks for hearing from me today. I'm Nick Salome. I'm the owner and the operator of Off Vine Restaurant in Hollywood, and I have been, with colleagues in the area, trying to put this bid together for about, oh gosh, over a year now. Whereas I feel I should perhaps address a few of the concerns of Mr. Morgan and Mr. Levitan, I can only say that we have held open meetings, and Mr. Morgan has certainly been present at many of them and has spoken at great length at them. I'm sorry if he feels his concerns have not been addressed. We are in a unique position between two sister bids, one to the north, one to the south of us, the Entertainment Bid and the Media District Bid, and we have seen tremendous improvements to the areas north and south of us. And we got together initially because we were experiencing actually more problems than we had known before the formation of our sister bids, because what was happening as the areas north and south of us got cleaned up, we were experiencing increased graffiti, crime, and homelessness in our area, and we wanted to address the problem. And one of the things that I'm most proud of in our bid is that we really do intend, in conjunction with our sister bids, to reach out to the homeless community in our area, which is a really serious problem, and try, in a really humane way, to address that problem. I realize that people may have qualms about the methodology of bids in general and about the taxation process. We're all being assessed, and I too am a tenant who has a pass-through lease and will be certainly paying more come tax time, but I think that this bid is absolutely essential to the continuation of my business in a healthy manner. My security costs have increased over the past year $43,000, and I'm hoping that this bid will help to address the security concerns in the area, and I urge you to support it. And thank you for hearing me today.
Thank you. The time has now expired, and the Chair recognizes Councilmember Garcetti.
Thank you, and with everybody's indulgence, I know that there's some other speakers, but maybe everybody who came here in support, if you want to stand up and just be recognized. Thank you very much for coming down. To give fair shake to anybody who came here in opposition, if you'd like to stand up as well. And thank you very much for coming down. I appreciate that. As you know, we had hearings on this in committee, so we don't legally have to do hearings again, but I did want a chance for the full Council to hear some of the issues that were brought up by everybody, and I appreciate everybody coming down here. I'm not a pushover for all bids. Bids for me have to have a high threshold, and they have to be a certain sort of bid because I know that they are about assessing businesses, and all businesses run as tight as they can, and to impose that upon businesses, in my mind, there has to be that high threshold to justify it. This is a bid that, for me, has reached that threshold. It's a Business Improvement District, first with a conscience that does want to address some of the social problems around in Hollywood. Secondly, I know that it has had open meetings. I've been to some of them, and I've seen some publicized, but we can always do better. And I think for all Business Improvement Districts, making sure, and the points that you made, Mr. Morgan, also Mr. Levitan, are very important in terms of making sure that tenants have notice as well, not just property owners. The city clerk's office has no way of knowing what the tenants are, but I've instructed the city clerk today to work with, when formations of bids occur, to ask the owners or the groups that are coming together to make sure that they publicize to tenants. And I know some of that was done here, but to make that a city policy, because of your suggestion, I'm going to move on that as well. And this is also for a set period, and that's the good thing about Business Improvement Districts. They aren't indefinite, and if they don't fulfill the mission that they're supposed to, then they don't get continued, and people get to, in essence, vote upon that again. And we will watch this one closely, but I have great faith in the leadership of this bid, and I want to thank all of the business owners that have spent so much of their time painstakingly going and making that case. It's one of the most difficult but also beautiful parts of democracy to have to do that, and I appreciate the work that you've done. Lastly, I want to say this is not an excuse, and I said this in committee, for the city and Business Improvement Districts should never be an excuse for the city not to fulfill its obligations. So I really see this as a partnership that hand-in-hand at the same time, as we've been able to in Hollywood, bring more police officers this year, bring more trash pickup programs to Hollywood to get bulky items off the streets, and more money to paint out graffiti, that we really want to be your partner. We're not just expecting to throw our services your way and have private enterprise pick it up. This is something that will be good for Hollywood, and everybody who owns property in this area, this will be something that should increase the value of your property in the long term as well. Thank you for your work. We'll be looking forward to working with you very closely, and for those who initially did not vote for the bid, we look forward in working with you to make sure that this is a partnership and that all voices are heard as the bid goes forward, because you now will have a stake in that Business Improvement District as well. Thank you very much, colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Labange?
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the Council, I rise to support Mr. Garcetti in this effort, as he and others are working hard to improve the quality of life, and this bid will provide that access. There's many positive, positive things in the spirit of the Sunset Vine area, and this will only enhance it from the great Columbia Square, where George Nicola has his great editorials, and all the people at KNX, but all the way down through the new Cinerama Dome project and also Blessed Sacrament, which I think is one of the prettiest churches in all of Southern California. So I just rise to support it. I know we have to work diligently to respect those who may be in opposition, but know it's all for the good. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair now recognizes Councilmember Holden.
Madam President, members, maybe the city clerk can help us, because we heard some people say that, at least I thought I heard them say, they were not aware, did not like the idea, generates a hardship on them. Chances are, did they all get a chance to vote? And is there a process for establishing a bid? And if there is a process, did this neighborhood comply with that process? And did by majority votes, or whatever that percentage is, they voted to establish votes or whatever that percentage is, they voted to establish a bid? I think those questions should be answered for the public. So the public here and those who are listening or watching would understand that things were done properly according to whatever the guidelines are.
Mr. Holden, members of the council, basically we are at the initial phase of the establishment of the Business Improvement District. This is an ordinance of intention and it will follow the government code and Proposition 218 under the California Constitution in terms of notice, a public hearing and a ballot process. So the stakeholders, in this case, property owners, will be receiving ballots to vote yes or no on whether the district should be formed. Depending on the outcome of that balloting process, the council then has the ability to adopt the ordinance and establish the district. The council always has the ability, notwithstanding the outcome of that balloting process, to not establish the district. But again, depending on the votes cast for and against, the council will have that option in the future when we get to that process. At the point the district is established and the owners association is formed, many new requirements such as the Brown Act and other government-type actions will be implemented. At this point, those processes are not available because there is nothing that exists that is being funded by public funds.
Ms. President, members, I wanted to have that explanation on the table for my district as an example. We went through the study process. We went even to a vote and when it was not shown that the majority of the business owners in the district did not want to establish the B I D, the council did not force it on them. And I think that it's already been mentioned here that they will follow the same guidelines in this case. And so for the benefit of those individuals who think they want to leave things as they are, they have a right to do that. This is just initiating the process and any number of business people can start that process, I believe.
Correct.
And that was already done.
That's right.
The B I D has not been officially established. So you have your right to do it the old democratic way, the American way, and that is by majority vote or die. And so I think that that information should have been put on the table and that's why I called you forward, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. There is no one else wishing to speak so, Mr. Garcetti, I think if you don't mind, we're going to hold this on the desk because I understand we are going to have 12 members and there's an ordinance associated with this so we will bring it up as soon as we have the 12th member come forward.
Just to explain that to folks, for ordinance is you need 12 people to pass it so we're going to have 12 people later so we're holding on the desk for the vote.
All right. Actually, if we'd like, we could probably approve the recommendation of the committee report and then hold the ordinance on the desk. So why don't we open the roll on the committee report, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
All right, the report is approved. We'll hold the ordinance on the desk. Next item.
Bedding number 10 called special by Councilmember Zine.
Chair recognizes Mr. Zine. All right, Don Spieck, Mr. Zine, we will hold that on the desk. Let's go on to the next item.
Bedding number 14 called special by Councilmember Holden.
Chair recognizes Mr. Holden on item 14.
Ms. President, members, this is CRA recommendation, I believe, and maybe someone can tell us what this is about with all these contracts being submitted and what they actually represent.
If we can ask CRA to come forward?
Yes. Yes, Madam President.
Could you please explain this, present a report to Mr. Holden?
Well, you've got like 50 of these contractors and they're going to be looking at different studies and tell us what they're doing and why and why you need it.
Thank you, Councilman. Don Spieck from the Redevelopment Agency. The item is to authorize contracts to 15 firms for real estate, market analysis and economic consulting services and 36 firms for land use planning.
35, maybe?
It's 36 is the number that's in the...
Okay, this number is wrong there for us.
Yes. The purpose of this is that in all of our project areas, there are various issues that come up from time to time that require specific types of expertise that we do not have on staff and that it does not make sense to specifically hire staff people to have that level of detailed expertise. So we enter into these long-term contracts with these various firms that we can call upon to do market analysis, to do appraisals, to do reviews of proposals that come through, to do design analysis, to assist the staff on design proposals, to do planning studies that are specific to a redevelopment project area or a portion of a project area. By having the groups of consultants hired this way, we're able to engage them in a relatively short period of time rather than having to do a full solicitation, take the time and the cost each time that there is a need for those services.
Madam President, members, I just want to endorse and embrace this concept.
I think that's... Excuse me.
It's a good idea, it's not unique, but it'll help us in my district. I know for an example, we have the areas that were established, we have the CAT groups in Venice, Washington, Crenshaw, Wilshire Boulevard where we are making some significant changes for the good of the community and we need some turnaround, real quick turnaround with regard to transit studies, land use related problems and so I'm going to enthusiastically vote for this. I think it's a good idea but I thought it was worthwhile just to highlight it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. There is no one else who wishes to speak so the matter is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, why don't we have the ordinance on item 2 put before us since we now have 12 members?
It is before you.
All right, item 2 is, let us just take this vote. Item 2 is before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, that ordinance is also approved. Chair recognizes Mr. Pacheco.
Madam President, I would simply ask to move to reconsider item 60 and just call it special.
Is there any objection? Mr. Pacheco likes 60 reconsidered and then called special for discussion. Seeing no objection, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. All right, that matter has been reconsidered and will be called special. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Bedding 26 called special by Councilmember Holden.
Mr. Holden?
Ms. President, members, I think that Mr. Koch, Koch should, oh, here you are, Koch should come up and tell us what this is all about. I think it's significant for an explanation given what happened just last weekend with a child being abducted and this is happening almost every day of our life. So would you tell us what this bill is about and what it's going to represent with the city of Los Angeles?
Yes, Michael Koch with the Legislative Analyst Office. AB 415 by Mr. Runner and Maddox would enlarge upon the already existing emergency alert system, also referred to as the Amber System. In California, this means that the Highway Patrol may activate the signs along the freeways to say that there has been an abduction, there's been an emergency of one sort or another and seeking cooperation of the public. However, this does not necessarily happen unless a local agency chooses to ask the C H P to activate the system. So this bill was introduced in order to address that and saying that if there is a serious abduction and the use of publicity would be relevant to the case and it would not endanger anybody, in fact, it would act to avoid a danger, then that that local agency, a police department or sheriff's agency, would be required to then call C H P and say, turn it on, let's get it going. So this bill would require the California Highway Patrol in consultation with the Office of Emergency Services, the Department of Justice and other agencies to develop policy and procedures providing instruction to the local police and broadcasters who participate in the emergency alert system to activate it. It would also require the C H P to develop a comprehensive child abduction education This bill is moving rapidly through the legislature without any dissent. It is passed yesterday out of Senate Appropriations Committee. It's already passed in the Assembly so it is on the floor of the Senate where it is likely to be voted on in the next two weeks.
Just one other question. The governor reported that on July 24th, the governor, Davis, announced a statewide child abduction alert system. When was this legislation introduced?
Well, the bill has been around since February of last year but it was on a different subject matter, yes. It's been...
Oh, I mean, when was this bill hijacked for this purpose?
That I don't know. I believe it was June 27th version of the bill.
Okay, so following the June 27th?
Just a minute, let me tell you. It was amended August 7th, August 5th. Both of those versions had to deal with this.
Oh, so hijacked after the governor made his suggestion?
It was this way, at least as of June 27th.
June 27th, oh, June 27th?
At least, yes, it's been that, basically the same thing.
Somebody up there should be giving credit or having some insight about what was needed at this particular time. The governor's recommendation coming to July 24th. So I guess, all right, the Highway Patrol, but they serve the pleasure of the governor, you know, they, the budget, he's got to sign off on that budget and so we need a statewide legislation that mandates that the Highway Patrol...
That local, that local police and sheriff's agencies, if they have discovered an abduction, that they are required to immediately notify the Highway Patrol and then the Highway Patrol to activate their system.
So the Highway Patrol is ready and willing...
Yes.
To do it at any time?
That's correct.
So this legislation only mandates that local, mandates the local authority?
Yes.
To comply? All right.
Yes, Councilman.
Thank you. There is no one else wishing to speak. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That matter is approved. Next item.
Bedding number 39 called special by Councilmember Zine.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Zine.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And this concerns the West Valley Area Police Station Project. The bond measure passed a few months ago and this station, which was established, I believe in the 50s, is the first of the new stations approved by the bond measure four months from the time the voters passed the bond measure to the point we are today and they will be moving in trailers, relocating the personnel at the West Valley Police Station. And I just want to bring to the attention the good work from the Board of Public Works, the city clerk, Councilmember Jam Perry for approving this, reviewing it properly, Department of Engineering, and it just shows that we can get a bond measure passed and a few months later have a project underway. There are other projects in the mix from Prop Q that will affect other districts on police facilities but we will have this station, we hope, within two years in full operation and by the end of this year, the current West Valley Station will be demolished and the officers will be in trailers for that period of time and that's satisfactory. We've had meetings with the community. There were some concerns, the issues have been resolved. So we request approval on this so they can move forward, bring in the trailers and start to relocate the personnel to build the new West Valley Police Station in the West San Fernando Valley. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Members before us now is the item to move forward on the first police station under Prop Q and four months after the voters voted for it, Mr. Holden would like to speak.
This is the police station in the valley? Right, now, this bond measure, what is the bond measure that will cause this to happen?
Prop Q.
Prop Q.
I think you're going to get one too.
Well, I understand that but what I'm concerned about is that this is the second time we voted to establish two police stations in the city of Los Angeles, one in the valley and one in Wilshire Center. Now, my question is, when are we going to do Wilshire Center? Have we, have we site designated yet, Mr. Deaton?
Two things, Mr. Holden. The bond measure, the prior bond measure did not say that we were going to build two police stations. It said that there was in the argument, a discussion that if there were savings, we would attempt to do so. There was no savings and we were not allowed, we were not in a position to do so. Subsequent to that time, out of other funds, we have built another station in the valley. As it relates to your police station, we have identified a site or two and are proceeding to try to conclude that. If we are able to conclude it in the fashion, we believe we will be able to, we will be coming back to you with the same kind of negative declaration and moving ahead on your police station as well.
Mr. Deaton, I was here on the first bond measure and you have some trick language in there but the voters...
The trick language, Mr. Holden?
Wait, 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 I'm trying to finish. The voters were under the impression they would get two police stations at that time and we subsequently said to them, I did here, that obviously they were misled after the fact because they believed they were getting something they did not get. This is the second time around. Where are the sites that have been identified for the Wilshire Center Police Station?
We'd be happy to go over those. There's several of them that involve some private and we'd like to...
Is it appropriate then to say, to make some kind of a motion not to let this go but at this particular time, verbal, just to say, identify or inform Public Safety Committee within the next two weeks where these sites are, when we can really start to go to work on them because the voters over here are going to get mad also, you see. You've got something coming up in November that's going to upset a lot of people. So don't turn your back on the inner city and I'm trying to make that point, I'm trying to help you.
Mr. Holden, I'd be happy...
Don't drag me out on one side or the other on this issue. We want to deal with the inner city as well. We've got a lot of crime in the inner city and we want to get it solved. We want another police station. Voters have voted for it. So, Mr. Deaton, I would say that's what we'd like to do. I want you to report to this Public Safety Committee if it's okay.
Next 30 days, I think, would be fine.
30 days?
Yes.
Long as you do it before November?
We will do it in the next 30 days and we'll be happy to and we would be happy to share and I want you to know that we, at staff, are as excited about building a police station in the inner city as we are in the San Fernando Valley.
Well, when we voted for the bond measure, remember that one? But you're getting nothing for it. You know we're getting something.
Thank you. The chair now recognizes Councilmember Labange.
Yeah, Madam President, members of council, I don't want to correct Mr. Holden but we work very hard with the police department and with the city agencies to locate a 20th station. It's great that the West Valley is jumping ahead and moving what they need to move on and we just got to do, we got to work as hard as they design. That's what we got to do. Is that right, Mr. Deaton?
Well, not to take anything away from Mr. Zine, but we already own the property.
Right, well, that's the trick.
And that was a head start and that's why we've moved ahead and I'm not trying to, Mr. Zine has been very helpful and I understand he'll guard it on the weekends for us in his capacity.
That's right. But also I just wanted to say too, Mr. Deaton, as we look at this here, please look at the subway station at Wilshire and Vermont. It's just opposite my new district now goes all the way west to Hoover to the original Pueblo line there but there's a large parcel that they simulated and put together when they built that. Maybe we could think differently. You can get two acres in the center of the city in Koreatown and Wilshire Center as you can out in other parts of Los Angeles. It's very difficult so we may have to think of going up with the police station as opposed to going out. So we'll go up and out and be creative or go in, use the middle floor of the, you know...
Go in?
Underneath the subway station, you know, I mean, everything that's there and then put the Transit Division station that's there that should always remain with the LAPD. But anyway, thank you, Madam President. Thank you for your work, continued work.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. The chair recognizes again Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Madam Chair and colleagues. We have a representative from Facilities Management, a sergeant from LAPD and if we can have you come forward and just briefly explain the concerns of Mr. Holden, I know that there are a number of stations that are in... I know that there are a number of stations that are in the planning stage. I know we were aggressively pursuing the West Valley Station. And we're looking at another location for additional station in the West Valley. I know the Northeast Station or the North Valley. The north, is it north? Anyway, if you can come forward, there's another station there under construction. But I think that Facilities Management has the information and we could answer some of the concerns. And I know it's not only the valley that's receiving facilities from this Prop Q, but the other parts of the city. I know Facilities Management from LAPD is here. Maybe they can answer some of those quickly? Well, the only thing I'd like to, it involves private property. We are pursuing it. We will, we'd be happy to discuss it in general because it involves going after, in some cases, going after specific pieces of property. But we're, I just just want to...
Mr. Zine, I'd also like to suggest that the other reports aren't before us today. This is the item that is ready. It has the EIR. Mr. Holden has asked that this be brought back to Public Safety to give a report on all the others, so I would like to request that that be the action here.
I just wanted to let note that we're not just stingy in the valley, but we're trying to make this work for the city. And this approval today will then mean that the West Valley will begin that transfer Monday?
That's right, we'll be able to start on Monday.
Mr. Sound, can we hear that response, please?
We will start delivery of the trailers to the site on Monday, to West Valley.
And then there's the full complement of move-in will be when?
We plan on relocating all the personnel from inside the existing West Valley Station by October 1st.
Okay, and then demolition will take place shortly thereafter?
Yes.
So by the end of this year, we'll have that facility underway?
Will be in construction before the end of the year.
Okay, and then obviously you'll be coming back for more information on the other concerns that have been expressed?
Right, and the reason, as you mentioned before, why West Valley is moving forward versus some of the other projects is because we have the existing land and the city owns the land.
I know you've been out there in the hot sun with your measure meter, doing measurements. So I want to personally and publicly thank you and Yvette from Facilities Management. And you're also part of that for making this come to fruition in this short period of time. We do appreciate it, and the people out in that far West Valley also appreciate it. Thank you for doing a good job out there.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Members, this item is now before us. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. That matter is approved.
Madam President, item number 10 is left on the desk. It was called special by Councilmember Zine.
Chair recognizes Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Madam Chair and colleagues. Item number 10, we have a staff member here from Personnel Department regarding this matter. Being the Chair of Personnel, we recognize that there are individuals within the city family who are injured and there has not been a real coordinated effort to try and prevent and take a very positive proactive approach to prevent injuries and keep people working in a productive fashion. And the injured on duty numbers seem to keep going up and various departments affected by hundreds to thousands of people who are not able to work because of workplace injuries, et cetera. And I'd like to hear from a representative in the Personnel Department regarding that and how we're going to address and correct that situation and keep these employees safe and productive in serving the people of Los Angeles.
Clearly, we, like a lot of other employers, have major issues as it relates to workers' compensation. We're going to spend, we spent $115 million last year on this issue. In all probability, we'll spend close to $130 million on this issue again for this year. And that's a significant amount of money and it's a significant amount of lost time for city workers. We lose over 900 employees every year full-time to industrial injuries. And as bad as that sounds, it could be dramatically worse because we have done a lot of things to reduce that cost, saving over $10 million through light-duty programs. And over 50% of the cost, the medical bill, is reduced through our third-party administrator. But once the injury occurs, we're going to pay. And the resolution of this issue is bring an end to the injury taking place. For every injury, there were probably 10 opportunities to prevent that injury. And our intention is to implement a proactive safety program from top to bottom, using every resource to bring attention to the workers, to work safely, number one, to investigate accidents immediately, to follow up on injured workers promptly in an effort to get them back to work and reduce the dynamic that people do tend to take longer getting back from an industrial injury than they do from an average sick-time injury. Part of our program is to release an RFP, to bring in a safety consultant to assist us with the design of this program and then use that consultant and a gain-sharing arrangement to bring those costs down long-term.
And how long has it been since we've had a coordinated safety program in the city?
Well, safety has not been a citywide priority at the level that it needs to be for probably as long as I have been here, which is about 20 years. We've had safety programs, we've added safety staff in conjunction with the City Council over the last two years. But the reality is, safety staff is not really the solution to this problem. The solution to this problem is a concerted integrated safety program, starting at the top, going to every single employee.
And then the cost factors involved in this project that we anticipate to the taxpayers?
Well, our anticipation is through this RFP to release it as an opportunity for whoever is a successful bidder to participate in our improvement. And therefore, there should be no initial upfront costs. And we would provide to the consultant the benefit of our gain as we reduce costs. They would benefit through that reduction in cost.
And if their programs don't work, they won't receive compensation?
That's correct.
Okay, so it's a win for the consultant, it's a win for the taxpayers, it's a win for the people of Los Angeles in that we'll have productive, safe environment for our employees to perform those services that the 40-plus thousand city employees do for the people of Los Angeles? That's correct. And this will be under the umbrella of the Personnel Department?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine, Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President and colleagues, I didn't want to completely reiterate what Mr. Zine said, but I believe we introduced this motion with the full intent of saving our workers from injury, protecting them in their own workplace. And obviously, the more safety we provide for our workers, the better it is for the city in terms of its overall budget because then we're paying out less in medical expenses and issues of healthcare. So I fully support the motion. I would like the council to adopt it and let us move forward to bringing a safer workplace for our employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. Other resolutions to be heard on this item? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote. That is approved. Next item, please. Mr. President, item number 60, as reconsidered, called special by Councilmember Pacheco. Mr. Pacheco, item 60.
Mr. President and colleagues, as was brought out earlier in one of our other actions of supporting the state legislation to deal with child safety and kid safety, I am asking the council to support declaring October this year Kid Safety Month. We have been working with the Children, Youth and Their Families Commission to develop various safety measures for our children here in Los Angeles. We're trying to figure out how we can get together with them and utilize a mobile fingerprinting unit to be taken to the schools to promote and facilitate fingerprinting. We'd like to ask councilmembers to work with the mayor, who's already been doing a few items and has a leaflet out to disseminate that information in their council districts. Based on what we've seen recently in terms of children and the actual abduction of children, I believe that we need to keep our emphasis and our focus on providing a safe environment for them and in hopes of bringing more attention to our efforts and in hopes of bringing more attention to the importance of protecting our children. I'm asking that we move forward on Kid Safety Month in October. I can share with you that we are planning in my council district a Parents' Rights, Responsibilities and Resources workshop and conference on the east side because we want to make sure that our parents know of all the resources available to them on how to provide good parenting and how to keep their children safe. We also want them to know that they have rights in terms of what is going on with their children in school, in the daycare centers, and wherever they put their children for safety or for childcare. And we also want them to know that they have responsibilities when it comes to protecting their children and working with the schools and childcare centers. So I would ask for your support in declaring October Kid Safety Month.
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. Other members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote. That is approved. Mr. President, that is the extent of the specials on the regular agenda. You also have a special meeting agenda. Do you wish to adjourn the regular and go into the special meeting? Before we do that, let me remind the members of the council, members of the public, as has been announced earlier in the meeting, this being the last meeting before the council recess, all approved matters shall be sent forthwith. But it's now temporarily reset the regular meeting agenda. And, Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll on the special meeting? President Glandred, Garcia, Gruehl, Hawn, Holden, LeBange, Miss Kaski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Ridley, Thomas, White, Zine, and Padilla, 12 members present in a quorum. Thank you very much. First item? First group of items is items 1 through 5. Those are items which public hearings have been held. I understand that item number 5 has a substitute motion that has been distributed. Items 1 through 5, the special meeting agenda now before us. Public hearings haven't been held. A motion from the floor will be required to reopen the public hearings. Members wishing to call any specials? Mr. Pacheco?
Mr. President and colleagues, I simply wanted to move for approval the substitute motion, 5A, that's been circulated, moved by myself and seconded by Mr. Zine. And I believe Zine had some language he wanted to insert at some part of the motion. So I'll defer to Mr. Zine at this point. But otherwise, I just wanted to officially move it forward.
Mr. Zine, is that technical in nature?
Yes.
If you can just make that verbal amendment?
The technical would be within their budget.
Okay.
That's the technical at...
Resources within their, within existing resources?
Within their established budget.
Correct. Other specials? Items 1 through 5, the special meeting agenda?
So, Mr. President, then you're receiving and filing for and adopting 5, the substitute 5, with the amended language of Mr. Zine?
Items 1 through 5 before us. Item 4, the motion is to receive and file. Item 5, with that objection, we shall consider the substitute motion as amended. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, item number 1 is an ordinance that will be held over in as much as you only have 11 members at the time till September 3rd.
Okay. Next batch of items, please.
Also on the special meeting agenda are items number 6 through 11, which are items which public hearings have not been held.
And having received no requests from members of the public to address the council on these matters, we shall deem the public hearings open and closed.
Mr. President, I understand item number 11, there are two reports on one file and a motion is required inasmuch as the recommendations differ.
Members wishing to call any specials? Item 6 through 11, or do I have a motion on item number 11? Mr. Ridley, Thomas?
On item number 11, I move the ITGS report on concurrence with the Chair of Economic Development Committee.
Mr. Zine?
8 and 9, special, please.
8, 9 called special by Mr. Zine. Members, we have any other specials? If not, we have items 6, 7, 10, and the ITGS committee report for item number 11. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
Those matters are approved.
Mr. President, members?
Mr. Holden?
We have the Minority Aid Foundation representation here. And they're in my district on Jefferson. Bishop Bean, he's been working with them for many, many years. Just want to stand up and have them to be acknowledged. Give them a big hand. And I want to thank Mr. Thomas for waiving this item out of his committee.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Mr. Clerk, next item?
Item number 8, called special by Councilmember Zine.
Mr. Zine?
Thank you, Mr. President. On the item, I have an oral motion for a technical change, both 8 and 9. Verbal motion, verbal motion, I'm sorry. To amend, remove the word blanket and substitute an exemption for the word blanket and conclude the recommendation with the phrase "consistent with the approved budget." I would ask that for item number 8, please. If that meets your satisfaction?
That would be item number 8 as amended.
Yeah, the verbal motion on the amendment. And jot those words because we're going to follow 9 with the same verbal motion.
Mr. Pacheco? Mr. Pacheco, on this item?
Number 8, Mr. President. I understand that we have worked with the department on the childcare, that it's not a blanket exception, but it actually covers the 16 current vacancies. If they need to fill further vacancies in the childcare area, they are going to come back to us. So I just want to make the record clear, if it's not, that this is not a blanket exemption. It's for the 16 current vacancies. And also, on the as-needed and part-time positions, they were waived on the condition that they are valid until October 1st, 2002, during the high season of usage for these as-needed and part-time positions. But once October 1st comes around and the season has passed, they will have to come back to us to continue hiring from that, from those positions. So I ask that 8 include those two in the final adoption of the action.
Mr. Zine?
In addition to the verbal that I made, which would all be consistent with the modification.
Okay, so we have item number 8 from the special meeting agenda as amended before us. Other members wishing to be heard? Mr. Pacheco for a second time?
I just want to clarify. I apologize, Mr. President and colleagues, but on the as-needed and part-time position, that's actually number 9, which is the next item. So only on number 8 am I speaking about the 16 current vacancies in childcare. When we get to number 9, I will push my button.
With that clarification?
And just clarification, we had removed blanket and put down exemption for those particular positions. Conner, you have that all squared away now?
I will have, thank you.
Members, on item 8 as amended? Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
That is approved. Now on to item number 9. Mr. Zine?
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. We request the same verbal motion as previously stated, remove the word blanket and substitute an exemption for the word blanket and then conclude the recommendation with the phrase "consistent with the approved budget." And Councilman Pacheco, his previous comments would apply to this item number 9, which are consistent with the verbal motion.
Mr. Pacheco?
Mr. President and colleagues, on number 9, just simply, once again, I apologize for having to repeat this, but that these positions are only exempted until October 1st on the as-needed and part-time positions. And after October 1st, the department will have to come back and confer with personnel and wrecking parks for those line items, to expend any money in those line items. And I would make that part of our adopting and moving.
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. Mr. LeBange?
Mr. President, is the CIO here on this? Who's going to speak to this here? I support this, but I wanted to ask a question there. We have a great investment in our many Department of Recreation and Park facilities of our golf courses. And due to attrition, illness, vacation, et cetera. There's five golf courses in Griffin Park. I don't know how many golf, 16 citywide? I'm not sure on the number there. But when they lose positions in the golf, for golf maintenance, the deterioration in the value in the stock of the golf courses. I don't golf. I've been on a golf course once in my life. I've been on a golf course once in my life. But in talking to the people that I represent, they were concerned that the care of facilities such as our golf courses, which then the fees paid by golf goes to help offset other costs. It's a revenue generating service, they pay for it. Who's watching that? Because I don't want to see our golf courses get injured, you know, in their service level by this. Did anybody have an update on that?
Speak to the requests.
Good afternoon. I'm Harold Fajita, Personnel Director for the Department. We share your concern, Councilman Labange, and we do have a request into the CIO that will address the hiring freeze as it affects those core positions that maintain our golf courses.
Great. I think all our parks should be maintained well, but a revenue generating and the investment of the, on the golf facility as far as the, I don't know if the right term is infrastructure, but the also the greens and everything, if the greens. And one year, we had a illness bug attack, the greens, and it took away, I think, 50% of the greens in Griffith Park, and had we not had the staff to, and then he had to pay for it to fix it. So please come back to me, and I'll work with my colleagues to help get adjustment in this area, because it does, golf does produce revenue for the Department of Recreation and Parks, correct? We do provide a service and reduce fare for seniors, but also does preserve, provide that, so I think it's real important. So please come back to me in September, and I also do support this as well.
Absolutely.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll. Before we tabulate the vote, Mr. Pacheco, did you wish to be heard? Okay. Roll is open, roll is closed. Please tabulate the vote. That is approved. Mr. Pacheco?
Mr. President and colleagues, simply asked to move to reconsider item number 10. I wanted to clarify and make some technical amendments on item number 10. Move to reconsider item number 10, Mr. President.
Okay, motion for reconsideration.
On the special agenda, yeah.
Please open the roll on reconsideration. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Item 10 now before us. Mr. Pacheco has his amendment.
Mr. President and colleagues, simply asked that General Services Department, when we waived and including the hiring of a Chief Accountant, too, it was made sure on the guarantee that they will keep the principal accountant position vacant for the year. So I just wanted to put that on the record and include that as a, and make a motion to make sure that the action we take today includes that amendment. So I'll move that as amendment to the action that the principal accountant position be maintained vacant for one year so that the Chief Accountant, too, position can be filled. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, other members wishing to be heard? If not, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on the item as amended. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That is approved. And I believe that is the end of our special meeting agenda. Let us adjourn the special meeting and return to the regular meeting. Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, not on the agenda is special one. It's a motion put forward by Councilmember Garcia, and the findings will be made by Councilmember Garcia.
Colleagues, this is for Domestic Partners Bill that is currently in front of the Assembly. And this week, after the posting of the agenda, we learned of some new opposition at the state level and wanted to take a stand, this is AB 25, Migdon, to expand benefits to register domestic partners. And so, having learned that information, we've introduced this today.
Please open the roll on the findings. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Special one now before us on the motion itself. Mr. Garcia?
Just a technical correction, it's actually a Kiwi bill. I referred to a Migdon bill, but this is AB 2216. Thank you.
Okay. Special one now before us. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Special one is approved. Next item?
Also not on the agenda is special two, and the City Attorney will speak to the need to make findings. Madam City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. President. This actually is what we used to refer to as a friendly Prop 5, so it's a friendly charter section 245. The Board of Recreation and Park Commissioners met April 14th and approved some bond money that must be spent by the 18th, and therefore, the council needs to make the findings that the need to act arose after the posting of the agenda and that there's an immediate need to act.
Members wishing to be heard on the findings? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Special two now before us. Members wishing to be heard on the motion itself? Mr. Garcia?
Very briefly, colleagues, this is just a chance for some CRA money to help with the rededication, reconstruction of Barnesdale Art Park, which is the largest art park in the city and a real jewel for the city, to make sure that we can fully fund that Frank Lloyd Wright masterpiece and have what's the best junior and adults' art program in the city. So this is a great use, I think, of local funds for a local purpose right there in the heart of Hollywood. Thank you.
Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That matter is approved. Next item?
Also not on the agenda is special three. It's a motion put forward by Councilmember Gruel, seconded by Mr. Padilla, and City Attorney will speak to the need to make findings. Madam City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. President. There is a very big problem of illegal street racing in the San Fernando Valley. The police department has asked for temporary street closure for safety reasons between 10:00 PM and 2:00 AM of Glen Oaks Boulevard, between Sheldon and Peoria. They've just come in on this, and it would only be for the next four weekends until we can put procedures in place to deal with this. And therefore, the council would need to make the findings that the need to act arose after the posting of the agenda, and there's an immediate need to act.
Members wishing to be heard on the findings? On the findings? Mr. Zine on the findings? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on the findings for special three. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That is therefore before us now. Members on the motion itself, beginning with Ms. Gruel.
Colleagues, many of you have been reading about the challenge we face in my district, not only at, on Glen Oaks, but in other parts, and we've introduced a motion to address some of the long-term resources that we can provide to our police department to address this. But last Friday night, when I participated in the drag racing task force, we were able to, you know, have more than 92 vehicles that we impounded. The good news is that we were able to impound those cars. The bad news is the next morning, many of them were taken already out that morning, all but three. And that following Saturday night, after we had our task force on Friday night, more cars showed up on Glen Oaks on Saturday because they believed that because the police department wasn't, was there on Friday night, that of course, they would not be there again on Saturday night. So the police department has asked us to authorize this closure of the streets again for the next four weeks on Friday and Saturday nights to ensure that we can stop the street racing in that neighborhood. So look forward to bringing some other proposals forward, but this is of an immediate nature to protect our community neighbors from street racing in the next four weeks. So I would ask for your approval. Thank you.
Mr. Zine?
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, Councilmember Gruel, on third paragraph, the second line.
Oh, yes, we put that particularly the reserve officers so that you could have something to do on Friday and Saturday.
I pledge my support to you. I will be there in uniform, taking care of those scoundrels and making sure.
Yes, watch out, street racers. Dennis Zine is there.
That's right, I will be there with all the resources of the LAPD. I invite my colleagues to join the reserves. Councilman Holden, you can come ride with me. We'll go take care of this matter. I'd also like to make a friendly amendment to this motion in the event that these individuals, as we know oftentimes happens, they barricade one road, they'll go to an adjacent area. If we can make a friendly amendment that another area, or if they then converge to another area within that general vicinity, the jurisdiction would have the authority to then take action there because you've got a specific location named. The concern is, if they then take that over, what's going to happen if they go around the block or, so can we expand that? And if we can make that friendly amendment to have that happen?
I would take the direction of the City Attorney, and again, I think that's a friendly amendment. I would accept where the police department felt was necessary to close the street if it went into the vicinity. I would suggest that if, when you come back from, that it would probably be okay to give that direction for the first three meetings, but if in fact, it looks like for the sixth and seventh, council will be back, it would probably be better to give DOT instruction on what streets to close. But in the interim, that we would give the police department discretion on those areas that are in the near vicinity during this next three weeks, but report back if it is required for further, and they'll be working with DOT because DOT will be closing the streets, actually.
Okay, good. Thank you. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, we have the item as amended before us. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That is approved. Next item?
Mr. President, also not on the agenda is special four. It's a motion brought forward by Councilmember Ridley Thomas, and I understand Mr. Ridley Thomas will make the findings.
Madam City Attorney?
I believe Mr. Ridley Thomas is going to make the findings on this.
Mr. Ridley Thomas?
Much more familiar with the facts.
Thank you, Mr. President and Madam City Attorney. As it relates to the findings, the state legislature is contemplating legislation that will be moved forward this coming week while we are in recess. It deals with the matter of predatory lending on which we've been working for the past year plus. Our hearings are in motion now. We've completed two, a third to be in Councilman Gruel's district in two weeks. If they were to act, we are very concerned that it would preempt what we are doing. We wish to send a message through our process of resolutions to the city, to the state legislature as to what our sentiments are with respect to predatory lending.
Thank you, Mr. Ridley Thomas. Other members wishing to be heard on the findings? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That motion is now before us. Mr. Ridley Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. President. It goes without saying that the issue of predatory lending is a very, very serious one, practically of an intractable nature. When people find themselves entangled in a situation of this sort, it is very, very tough for them to extricate themselves from the jaws of those who prey on unsuspecting individuals who find themselves in financial straits, only to be made victims by those who take advantage of them in extraordinary ways. Those who are typically victims are senior citizens, there are those who are immigrants, particularly those who are monolingual. This is all documented. What we seek to do with our predatory lending ordinance is try to help these individuals stay out of harm's way. We've worked with the Housing Department, we've worked with a number of the federal agencies, we are even contemplating work with the DA's office. This resolution essentially says to the state, please do not attempt to prevent us from helping those who need us most minimally by mandatory counseling and a range of other things that we are trying to evaluate through our public hearing process. This motion, members, will then help us send that message, and I trust that you will join in the unanimous vote of the same.
Thank you, Mr. Ridley Thomas. Mr. Garcia?
Let me praise my colleague, Mr. Ridley Thomas, for his tireless effort on this issue. And as the Housing Community Development Committee, when I was acting chair, and then with Councilmember Gruel became the chair, we've held a number of hearings on this throughout the city, and we have established the potential differences here in Los Angeles that we do not want all that work to go to not, or for not, rather. And so, I also urge your support. This will allow Los Angeles to really set the standard to make sure that predatory lending does not prey on the victims in our communities here. So I urge your vote as well.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Other members wishing to be heard on the motion? Seeing, Mr. Holden?
Mr. President, members, Mr. Thomas, weren't a speaker involved in something like this before? I think we took some prior action on this. There was a big issue made in local newspaper regarding predatory lending. Even you borrow money one week and you pay 25%.
The Migdon bill is the most recent action taken by the state legislature on it.
And this bill is, that's in motion, is designed to preempt local government. You know, we're going to vote for this, but it bothers me when it becomes a likelihood that at least whereas 50 votes of the Assembly should make a determination regarding this legislation, and it's about to go and law likely to go into law. Objection, and not only that, that can be repressive to people who need most, just wonder where their hearts are. And sometimes, you got to tell that legislative advocate, no, I mean, the lobbyists.
Exactly.
And this is one such time. As President, members, I urge you to vote special four.
Other members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That is approved. Next item?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Also not on the agenda is special five. It's a motion brought forward by Councilmember Missakowski, and the City Attorney will speak to the need to make findings.
Madam City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This has to do with AB 2361, a CDO bill which would authorize an advertising display in the city of Los Angeles for a not-for-profit academy. And it would be subject to certain conditions, but it also would, it would basically preempt, I think, approximately three of the city's laws regarding off-site housing. This just came to the floor of the Senate, and action is imminent. It's expected that this will be going to the governor within the next two weeks, and therefore, the council would need to make findings, and then they would vote on the motion.
Members wishing to be heard on the, excuse me, on the findings? Ms. Perry?
No, I'm sorry, next item.
Ms. Missakowski? Other members on the findings? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on the findings for special five. Roll is open. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Nine eyes, three no's.
Findings are not made? That matter is not before us. Next item, please.
That matter failed. Not on the agenda is special five. It's a motion brought forward, excuse me, motion six. Special six. Special, special, okay, here we go. Not on the agenda, special six, is brought forward by Councilmember Padilla. The City Attorney will speak to the need to make findings. Madam City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a motion for a reward for the attack and murder of Pablo Mendez on April 7th. However, the police think that there's information leading to this crime, and therefore, they've asked us to bring in a reward motion for $25,000. The council would need to make the findings and then the motion.
Members wishing to be heard on the findings? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Special six now before us. Members on the motion itself? Please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That matter is approved. Next item?
Not on the agenda is special seven. It's a motion brought forward by Councilmember Padilla, and the City Attorney will speak to the need to make a finding.
Before we do so, Ms. Perry? Before we do so, Ms. Perry, do you wish to be recognized?
Okay, Mr. President, thank you very much. I wanted to request reconsideration on item 54 just to amend the date.
Item 54 of the regular agenda?
Yes.
Okay, let's take a pause in the special motions. There's a motion for reconsideration. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Item 54 of the regular agenda now back before us. Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much. I'd just like to amend the date of August 23rd, 2002 and change it to August the 12th, 2002.
Okay. With that amendment, other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none? Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on the item as amended. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That is approved. Back to special items.
Special item seven brought forward by Councilmember Padilla and the city attorney is speaking to the need to make findings.
Madam City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think this is the last one we're going to be speaking on today. This has to do with matching funds, AB 2997. The staff was, the state staff has notified the city staff yesterday that this is not going to be retroactive to Prop 12 and therefore the council would need to make the findings and vote on the motion.
Anyone on the findings? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Motion is now before us. Members wishing to be heard on the motion itself? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That matter is approved. Next item.
Now it's time for public comment on non-agenda items.
Council call forward at this time, Mr. Leonard Rose Jr., followed by Melrose Larry Green.
Leonard, may I ask you, I thank the mayor, Jim Hahn, to all city council to make our Los Angeles better community. We need to get more job opening throughout California, Los Angeles area. If you already did, thank you again. Make our city better than ever before. Put on a newspaper, wanted and book, computer internet. One newspaper rack said, need a hand, classification connection. Number two, thousand of jobs inside every Sunday and career building. Classification print online, your future is here like seen on TV. Three, billboard, sign posted, worksourcecalifornia.com, 888-266300. Dare to dream, mean what you want to be when you grow up, that your job, when you want to get in school, college, learn, train school, like one, training over 40 center. Two, job lesson. Three, business service, work source, your business, your career, anything de possible. Number one, what every job you dream of, stick into that dream and dream come true, what you wanted to be on one of these jobs. Business owners and manager put hiring, sign, help, wanted, wanted paper books, keep your business going. And I made a speech a month ago about their job safety program and I'd like to have you guys each have a copy in here. If somebody make the copy for you. And this career building at Spring Street, if anybody want a job. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Larry Green, followed by John Dutton.
That's Melrose Larry Green. I actually was not going to come down here this morning. I was going to go running up in Runyon Canyon, but I had such an extraordinary evening last night that I wanted to share with all of you. I was part of the open house in the fourth district that's sponsored by my councilman, Tom Labange. And what was so great about that evening, besides the sumptuous dinner upstairs in the Tom Bradley room, was the bus tour of downtown Los Angeles. And I want to tell you, I had no idea how beautiful downtown Los Angeles has become. First of all, I want to thank Councilman Labange for the great tour. He's a great tour guide and a great singer, I might add. But I want to tell you, I couldn't begin to tell you the faces, the faces, people were waving in their apartments as they saw this beautiful double-decker bus waving that we would be going at eight o'clock at night through the bowels of downtown Los Angeles. And people were so proud and I was so proud to be part of this tour and we were so overloaded with people, they had almost twice as many people as they expected. And I just wanted to thank Tom and his office. It's a wonderful, wonderful thing and I, if you see a guy looking like Melrose Larry Green running back on Temple Street to Las Palmas, that's me, I took the bus here and the metro and I don't mean to show any disrespect being dressed this way, but I was so enthusiastic about last night, I had to come down here. I know sometimes you think it's an uphill battle what you all are doing to try to solve the problems of LA, but it's not uphill. You have crossed the top of the uphill and now it's downhill. And those of you that complain about the city of LA, look at all the building going on. Look at all the new schools that are going up the parks. I'm totally serious. It's a great job you're all doing and it's a team effort. And I'm an old man compared to most of you young people on city council, but it's great, keep up the great work and let's have more tours of downtown LA and congratulations to Tom. If you ever get out of politics, you'd be a great tour guide. Thank you very much. Have a good recess. I'm Melrose Larry Green. Thank you.
Thank you, Melrose Larry, old man Green. John Dutton is our final speaker.
Mr. President and members of the city council, my name is John Dutton. I live in, reside in the area of Rampart Division. I want to thank the office of Mr. Garcetti. This is regarding to Jessica Cortez in the Echo Park. First thing in the morning, field deputies of Mr. Garcetti had came out and posted out flyers in Spanish. It was passed out to the community, which is a good help. I also want to thank Office Depot for making 11,000 flyers located second Alameda, which also got the community involved. And second of all, this coming Sunday in the park, we're expecting over 500 people. The Los Angeles Police Department will be coming out and showing the public how to avoid child abduction. And we're trying to bring the Rampart police and the community closer together with Echo Park. I have gave my commitment to the community. I want to clean up the park, get better grass. There's one park called Hazard Park on Soto Street in Los Angeles. There's Lincoln Park, there's Hollenbeck Park, but there's no money been put into the Echo Park. This is a really big issue, the boathouse. These matters will be addressed in Echo Park and I'm going to be dedicated to the community to make Echo Park a better and safer place for the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti.
Very briefly, I want to thank John for his efforts. He's very modest. He was the person who was coordinating many of the over 1,000 volunteers that were canvassing the neighborhood when Jessica disappeared. So thank you for your work from all of us. You really helped bring her back home and we look forward to honoring you and council will bring everybody in in September as well. So thank you for that and we'll see you around everyone.
Thank you. This concludes public comment for today's meeting. Mr. Clerk, next item.
Motion for posting and referral? Motion shall be posted and referred. Councilmembers request for excuse from council attendance. Councilmember Garcetti requests to be excused on September 27th for city business. This meets policy. Mr. Garcetti is excused. And Councilmember Glanter requests to be excused on September 10th for city business. This also meets policy.
Ms. Glanter is excused. The justice is clear. Are there any announcements? Members? Mr. Labange?
Twenty-five years ago today, I was driving south on Melrose Avenue, listening to KFWB. I usually listen to KX, but I was listening to KFWB south on Western at Melrose. Thank you very much. I always like when they get corrected. I appreciate that. Southbound on Western and that news flash came out that Elvis Presley was taken to the hospital in Memphis and then when I got on the Hollywood freeway, by the time I got to Vermont, they announced that he had died. And I remember coming into council chambers because it was a Friday and this council stood in a German memory of Elvis Presley and the impact that he had. And then Councilman Bob Farrell made a very eloquent speech about the impact of Elvis of being able to take music primarily learned as a youth African-Americans who lived in the South and their music and mix it with rock and roll and transcend a whole generation. Truly a monumental person was Elvis Presley and his efforts. I happen to be a fan of his, as some of you may know and that some of you may share, but the impact that rock and roll music has had on all of the lives of people and not just in America, the world is monumental and Elvis certainly was that. I will note that there was 47 registered Elvis Presley impersonators when he died 25 years ago. Now there's over 4,000, including one tonight who will be in Jan Perry's district out there at the California Plaza in his performances. So I just wanted to rise in announcements to say the impact that people have in music and rock and roll music and the effect of what it does for everybody and the beauty of music and Elvis and it's very important for us to recognize Elvis Presley as the king of rock and roll, but also as Elvis did, recognize those who were around him and he learned from and grew up in his neighborhood at Hughes High in Memphis and learned from others and took other music together and then also helped break the terrible barriers of color that often was part of America at that time and should continue to be broken through art and music.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Garcetti?
Let me say we have one of the best Elvis impersonators already here in Tom Labange on this council. And if you ever have been lucky enough to go down to the basement of his house, you'll see an impressive collection of velvet Elvises. I think one of the best probably in the city. So we appreciate your love of the game.
His wife is so proud.
And if he was alive today and some say he still is, Tom Labange would come up to him and say, what high school did you go to? And he'd already know. Hughes High.
Other announcements? Mr. Pacheco.
Tonight, in honor of Elvis Presley, Elvis is going to be at the Grand Performances at California Plaza and it's a show you can't miss. Another announcement I have is I just want to wish my sister a happy birthday, her birthday. She watches us. She watches us.
She watches you, Mr. Pacheco.
My sister Lillian, she's 29 again. Happy birthday.
Other announcements?
I would ask that the council member make sure, give your sister a nice gift, other than the little acknowledgement today on television. A little more, Nick, okay?
All the other announcement members is actually for the public, as many people know, but many more probably do not, the council will stand in recess after today's meeting for two weeks. The next council meeting will be Tuesday, September 3rd. Are there any adjourning motions today? Adjourning motions? Ms. Hahn.
One more announcement I could, this afternoon, right now, there's a barbecue picnic for our retired employees in the courtyard of Civic Center. Many of our employees coming down every summer for this little picnic and if any of you have time, walk across the street and greet them. They've done a lot of great service over the years, our retired employees. Annual picnic, thank you.
Mr. Holden?
Channel 35, in fact, those who produced the show, we're celebrating just yesterday, last Wednesday, but these people watch Channel 35 in the morning, in the evening, at night in case they missed something and then on the weekends, all over again. And we want to know, them to know that we understand there's going to be some kind of withdrawal for the next two weeks that's going to happen. But after that, we'll be back and we'll be in session. The soap opera will begin. Continue.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like us to adjourn this morning in the memory of Jerry Vilecich, who was a native of San Pedro and who died this week at age 79. Jerry was best known in San Pedro for owning and operating Vilecich Watch and Clock Repair, a business he opened in 1947. Jerry went to San Pedro High School and then he served in G Company of the 163rd Infantry Regiment, 41st Infantry Division of the Army, where he attained the rank of Staff Sergeant. He served in Australia, New Guinea, the Philippines and Japan during the occupation after World War II. Jerry was awarded the Combat Infantry Men's Badge for service on the front line as well as a Bronze Star Medal. And after the war, he planned to attend dental school, but the schools were filled with other homecoming soldiers, so he wound up studying watch repair. He's been known for his bow ties and wonderful personality. He's been a familiar face around our town and friends recall Jerry's personality this way. When you were Jerry's friend, you were his friend forever. He's survived by his companion of more than 25 years, Fay Haddock. Three sons, a daughter and three sisters. Those of us in San Pedro will miss him very much.
Mr. Holden?
Mr. President, members, sad to announce that Lillian, also known as Lil Comber, she is 83 years old, just died August 13th this year. Miss Comber's communication career began when she introduced her first theatrical column in the California Eagle, known African-American newspaper. Shortly thereafter, in 1939, she published her first black entertainment magazine called Bronze and later published a second magazine, Sepia Hollywood. For 19 years, she was a columnist for the Los Angeles Tribune. In 1956, Miss Lillian, Lil Comber, became the first black female movie and television agent in Hollywood, a pride that the doors of opportunity for minorities do not always open. Since the 1930s, Miss Comber has touched the lives of many black stars in Hollywood, including Dorothy Dandridge, Stephen Fletchett, to name a few. In 1968, Lil was responsible for selling the first script written by an African-American to a major network. She was also instrumental in getting the first African-American in a TV commercial on the West Coast. As a writer-publicist, personal manager and talent agent, she has represented many actresses and actors over the years. 1974, Lil was introduced in the Black Film Makers Hall of Fame. In 1975, she was included in the ninth edition of Who's Who of American Women. She survived by her two sisters, Dorothy Clark and Ellen Jones, two brother-in-laws, Willard Clark and Eurydice Jones, and a host of nephews and nieces. The services will be Sunday, August 17, 1:00 p.m. in the Church of Divine God in 1518 South Gramercy.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, colleagues, Councilmember Perry, myself, wanted to adjourn in memory of Yvonne Wilson. Yvonne Wilson is the mother of one of our great downtown advocates and Cheryl Wilson. Yvonne Wilson will be remembered for her work with the International Red Cross in Nigeria and in Thailand and for her work with Direct Relief International of Santa Barbara. She is survived by her daughters Cheryl Wilson of Los Angeles and Wendy Castello of El Granada, California. By her grandchildren, Colin Castello and Kira Castello. By her sister Patricia Turi of Hampton, Connecticut. And I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Yvonne Wilson's service to...
Ms. Perry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to, I asked Mr. Pacheco to, so that we could do this together because Cheryl is a constituent who works in both of our districts and she, not only is an advocate, she works on solving problems on behalf of the homeless and keeping the historic cores clean and safe as she possibly can. She's just a tireless advocate, so I'm pleased and grateful to join together on this.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Mr. President and members of the council, would you please join me in memory of Marvell Grigsby, a longtime employee of the Shrine Auditorium with more than 20 years of dedicated service. He passed away of an apparent heart attack this past Wednesday. He was an institution at the shrine and was well-liked by his coworkers and many of the shrine's clients. Known for an infectious smile, a wonderful demeanor and helped make everyone there feel a sense of ease with his sense of humor. Over the years of his service there, the shrine hosted many of our city's and our nation's top entertainers as well as events. Mr. Grigsby befriended many of them and makes note of how important it was to them that he was there to help make their events go smoothly and listed among them would be Dick Clark and Don Cornelius. Marvell Grigsby will be sorely missed. He is survived by his wife, Kay.
Mr. Zine.
Mr. President, colleagues, request we adjourn in memory of Annie Latham. Annie died at the age of 38 of unknown causes. She's the daughter- She's the daughter of Celeste Latham, whom I've known for the past 12 years at my local cleaners in West Hills. Member of St. Bernadette's Catholic Church in West Hills. Services will be this weekend. Annie survived by her mother, Celeste, and brothers and sisters. May she rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Other tributes? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.